So this work session is to kind of talk about policy governance. We are now, and we're going to go next. And the reason I started talking about this is because we need to do some strategic planning for the next few years. Look at that, we need to put some CIP information together to get to the planning commission. And we need to do a joint meeting with the planning commission. Which, the latest one, the last one, is also a policy. So, in trying to put all these together, I had a conversation with Susan Radlon saying, can we put all these together in one meeting and have you coordinate it? She said, yes, she could. So that's how we got the estimate that I gave you in the last meeting. Segue-ing a little bit, policy governance is a really stringent way of running any kind of a board. And we've kind of adopted some of it, but some of the policies that we put in place, that we did ourselves, we're not adhering to. And some of that falls back to the previous manager who should have been kind of coordinating this, and I ended up kind of picking it up. He didn't do his reporting, as was shown in the, in the book. There's a code of conduct, there's an annual meeting and the planning agenda, there's budgeting, and five of these that we are not doing, monitoring the township manager's performance, and we're not monitoring our own performance. So, knowing that we have all these dangling policies that we have in place that we're not adhering to, I started to question whether we, what do we want to do with them? Do we want to get rid of the ones that we're not doing? Do we want to scrap policy governance altogether? And that's where I thought Susan could kind of help us figure out where we were going forward. I can try to do some of this analyzing and presenting, I can work with John and give you some recommendations. That's not my expertise, which is why I reached out to Susan. And on the other side of that, that's from the board side. The other side, John's read the policy, the board policy manual, and he needs direction. He needs to know if we're going to, if we want him to adhere to the reports and to handle the yearly plan of work and to put the spreadsheet together. If we don't, that's okay. I don't have, I don't have an agenda for this. I'm not saying we need to do this. It's my job to bring things to the board and to give you ideas and thoughts, as well as you bringing them to me too, to put on the agenda. But if you remember, I don't know if you can see this, Ernie, but this is that spreadsheet that I did for the whole year. We're supposed to be monitoring our policies at every single meeting. We're supposed to be gauging our performance, we're supposed to be gauging the manager's performance, and we're not doing it. So, being short three board members today doesn't help, but I thought if we at least had the conversation, we could talk about it again Tuesday and find out what direction does the board want to go. Doesn't matter to me, I just need to know what's in place so John and I can figure out how to maintain it.
Lynn, the board member not here, did they call and say they weren't with me here?
John and Linda, I don't know, I haven't heard from them. And I checked my email.
They might have forgot because we don't have the email.
Come on in.
Text him.
All right.
Dan did text me and say that he's got some other things to say. And I told him he could zoom in, so he wants to do that, I don't know.
French. I had that salad.
I don't know that we can even talk about this well enough, although we do have a forum and we can conduct a meeting. John, you want to throw something out? Because this is recorded, right, Randy?
No, I'll mute myself here.
If you guys aren't here, can you go back and listen to this?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, from my perspective, I just, I don't know if he was talking to us.
Yeah, I think he was talking to somebody.
I guess from my perspective, having a clear understanding of what the board's expectations is really what I need. So that I can do my best to meet your expectations. I know the honeymoon period isn't going to last forever, so as that's dying down here, I want to make sure that I'm picking up the ball and running with whatever expectations you do have. And if it means picking up these reports and doing them for the first time, I'm okay with that. Like I told Lynn earlier, I'll sink or swim on this, just like everything else, I'll figure it out. But if you don't want it, then I'll not waste my time on it and I'll try to focus on other productive things. So, it's completely up to the board what you want. I just need to know what it is that you're expecting, so.
I don't see us adhering 100% to policy governance. It's very stringent, it's very regimented. I don't think this board is that kind of a board that we want such perfection, which is okay. Like I said, doing, doing this calendar, that takes a lot of work and planning, and you've got to get it on the agenda, and you've got to look up for the documentation, and you've got to see what it refers to, and it's.
This board isn't like a lot of other boards either, you know, they like to hands-on, and so they understand it. I see a lot of times before, somebody goes to a department head in order of these agreements. We don't go to the department, we go to John, John gets all that stuff, and the words we use to intermixing with them, then we get our answers and stuff like that. You know, that's one thing I noticed, you know. And I don't know if you want to change that, that's.
Well, I spoke to Lynn before the meeting, and I said, we follow, just like she says, we follow a modified version of this, and I think that's just the way we should continue.
Yeah.
I did tell her that we should probably take a meeting or two early in the year, or maybe quarterly, just to go over these policies and make sure they're making sense for us.
Right.
And that wouldn't take very long.
And which ones are we not doing?
Or which ones do we need to change, right?
Well, that's where I just thought Susan can help, and I'm not pushing her. I'm just trying to get a neutral party too that can help us go through this and say, are you doing this? Do you care about it? Do you like it? Do you want to change it? I see this book kind of cutting in half. I don't see that we need to, she's got all the minutia, you've got to remember, we did this with her, and she's got what maybe big corporations do. And I think even the ends policy, it's just a healthy lifestyle community that optimizes opportunity to be active no matter one's age. Okay, do we need the other one, two, five, six, six of these? Seven of them? I don't think so. That's just one example. Some of the, some of the things that we're not doing fall back to the previous manager. And I'm not throwing them under the bus, but we didn't, as a board, we didn't impress on him that it was something we wanted him to do. And if we didn't want him to do them, then they shouldn't be in here. So I'm just looking for, you know, an editing pen. Some kind of direction, and you know, this is not a, this is not a motion meeting, this is a work session. So we're not going to decide, you know, or make any law here.
If we don't tell them what we want, you know, that's.
John needs some direction, you know, he's gotten to the point where he's, he's getting comfortable with his job, so he knows kind of who to talk to, what to do, he understands the board a little bit, how we work. And, but now he needs, well, he needs a staff in here too, which we're going to have to figure out is when that happens. But he wants direction, he wants to know what we expect of them, so that he can get it into place. And now, while it's a little quieter, would be an easier time to do it too.
Yeah.
It's been three years since we've looked at these policies, so.
Oh, well, I throw out a suggestion.
Yeah.
Why don't I go through this and edit it to the point where I think it covers the important things? It does, where it accomplishes the things that I think you need from me and vice versa. And it's probably going to cut the document in half to a keep-it-simple, stupid version.
Yeah.
And get it to you for your next meeting, not, not next week, but the following, which would be the first meeting in April, correct?
Yep.
And maybe the board can look at that and say, yeah, I agree with it, or no, we don't. Put some things back in, or maybe even take some more out. I think Lynn, you gave a perfect example under the ends, I think. Township staff in particular is focusing on the ends. We are doing those. But it does get into some things like engagement in a democratic process.
Yeah.
I think that is a bigger picture issue that shouldn't only be focused under the healthy lifestyle issue, it should be everything we do, you know? So, we could probably take out some of the sub-points or sub-sub-points and simplify it. Cut this document in half, so number one, the tool is manageable. And that should in turn make the reporting more manageable, to the point where I'd even be willing to do it voluntarily, whether you told me to or not, you know? So, I guess that's my thought on it.
Yeah, it sounded, we did talk about this, did we get any response from your staff, or what happened before, or stuff like that?
Well, lately, it's been really difficult to communicate to staff. Number one, most of them aren't here. Number two, our Microsoft Exchange server is down. And we're moving completely away from that now, because we can't even conveniently email each other right now, which was the best way until last Thursday, so. And of course, the Microsoft issue is a global issue, it's not a local issue, so. Anyway, that's my proposal. I'm willing to give you what I think should be a simple version of the policy. Having read through it, I don't see anything in there that's a concern to me, other than some of the things that Lynn mentioned, in that we're not doing the reporting, and is it important to do so? So, I guess if we can figure that part out, I'm willing to give you my suggestions, knowing full well that they could be very 100% opposite of what the board's, the full board's expectations would be, but.
Let me ask you a question, John. When a board member comes in and goes over to a staff member and starts talking or asking questions and that, how do you feel about that? Because we're supposed to go to you, and then you get the information, go back to the board member, whatever.
Here's, here's how I feel about it. As long as, if it's important enough for me to know about, and the staff member informs me of what happened, I have no problem with board members inquiring about anything.
You want them to talk, to ask you first? Because you might have them on an important task, and you don't go in there.
Yeah, so controlling that environment is important. I would say right now, not, not as much as if we were fully, been 100%, 100% operational. But I believe in an open-door policy. And I also believe that sometimes it's quicker to go straight to the horse's mouth than to go through the filter. So, yeah, I, I think you're probably right in that, saying, hey, I need, I need to talk so-and-so about this, are you okay with it? So I already know what the subject is. And then I can say, yeah, that's totally appropriate, because they're going to have more of the answer for you than I do anyway. I don't have a concern with that. When it becomes board members trying to manage a staff member's time, then we get into an issue. Sharing of information, inquiring, I think, is fair game all day long, because that's how it's been everywhere else I've been. And I'm comfortable with that.
Some of that, I think, started when I was a trustee, and I was going to Lois for information about maybe employee hours or budget items that I didn't, it didn't make sense, or I was inquiring about, and I got shut down and said, you don't go to the employee, so I don't know if you've had that same case. You know, if you're just asking Brenda about your water bill, or checking with Andrew on, you know, correspondence or something, that's pretty general. But if I were going into Andrew as a trustee and started asking about how she files, or, you know, her job, then I think that's what, what tripped the trigger in my case.
Yeah.
I was going too far. First of all, I was a trustee, so I didn't have the need to do that. I didn't have the authority to do that, and I understand that now. Secondly, you start infringing on the employee's time, you know, and making things up. And I know of former trustee who's not on the board anymore also, was trying to monopolize, not on purpose, but getting information from the accounting department over and over and over, and you know, and it's like, hey, I'm trying to do my job, and this board member keeps coming up and asking me for stuff, and I have to put this report together. And it was a snowball thing, it kind of got out of hand, so I think that's how that stuck.
So, maybe the, the appropriate response in that case is, in order to avoid that in the future, knowing that it could happen again anytime you have a change in board members, is the requests go through me, and I can authorize whether or not the communication occurred directly with that employee or not, depending on what the situation is. I can see board members wanting specific accounting information that isn't part of the normal reporting. That would make sense to request now and then. But to do multiple requests over and over again, where Lois can't do her job, obviously is not, not appropriate, so.
Well, I thought about that years ago, in store. We'd have a salesman go and take up a half hour, the department gets time, then the department head goes on his lunch hour. Then, you know, there you go, you got an hour shot, and you got a 40-minute shot, and he's not getting the stuff done. And then, when I went, I know one time I went in and I talked to Darcy, and I come out and I thought about that, just hit my head, you know. Holy shit, I'm doing the same thing, I hurried him up to these other department get to, you know.
Yeah.
So, that's when I stopped.
Generally speaking though, everyone on staff here wants to be helpful.
Yeah.
And, and if it's a, if it's a relatively straightforward question, you'll probably get a quick answer. But if it requires a whole bunch of additional work, then the communication has to happen on the front end to make sure that we're not distracted.
We don't know what you're going to recognize, you're doing, so.
Yeah, and you know, interesting you used Dulcey as an example. Her position is very self-managing, to the point that my management has to be ensuring that, confirming that she's actually doing her job, right? I think everyone in the state knows that she's an established professional. And the A-Mar is going to tell us or confirm that for us every time. But if I don't at least pay attention to what she's doing, how do I know that, right? So, while I need to manage the employee, I don't need to micromanage the employee. And figuring out where that is, is the key, and I don't think anyone wants a boss that's a micromanager. So my goal is to not get there unless it's necessary, you know? So, I don't know. I'm a pretty flexible person with a high level of tolerance, to the point of, when you get into unacceptable behavior, and that's where I always drop off on, you know? And I think this makes a lot of that very clear, but it also is probably a little cumbersome.
So, I've gone through, like I said, and highlighted some stuff. It'd be nice if the rest of the board would, and we wouldn't have to use work, work sessions or board time to do it, and then maybe schedule another work session and actually go through it.
Yeah. Do we have this document in Word format, or only PDF?
It's Word.
Is it? And that's probably the format you sent it to me, and I just can't remember.
Yeah, it's in Word, so Exchange is all very easy.
Yeah. So, I could actually submit to the board an edited version that shows the cross-out sections, the highlighted ones that I've got specific questions on, or whatever.
Well, I guess the basic concept of policy governance is good, but it's cumbersome. It's way too cumbersome for reporting, in my opinion. And the basic premise is you give the manager more authority than the board, you know, I think you've done that. The reporting, like I said, the reason why we got away from these, the calendar and such is because we just approved the policies a year ago, and there was nothing really changed, so that we were fine with them. And I can't say last year, last year's a lost year, in my opinion. So, in this year, the first half of this year's a lost year, in my opinion, but also. What we should probably gear up for is get, get what we like in these policies, get what we like out, that we don't think are needed, and maybe just do a modified board policy moving forward. And we can do strategic planning, I don't have a problem with strategic planning with Susan, she's, she's good at that. But I think we can do this policy governance in a modified fashion. Where we don't have this cumbersome reporting, because that takes a lot of John's time that we can do other things with.
Time that I probably have now, but when we're back to full, full operations.
The other thing you really have to remember with this, and I tried to stress it when we started with it, because it referred almost exclusively to the manager. And everybody would say, board members would say, well, Randy knows how to do that, so we don't need to worry. Randy knows that, he's been doing this for a long time, Randy knows this, and I kept saying, it's got to be for the manager, because at some point Randy's not going to be here.
And now we're there.
Whoever steps in needs to have those parameters. That was the whole point of me agreeing to this, because originally I didn't like the idea. And Dennis was trying to convince us this was the way to go. Once I realized that it involved the manager predominantly, it made sense, because we knew that he was going to be retiring. So, same thing for a new board member. Now, we haven't talked to Linda, in fact, she just said she thought the meeting was at 3 o'clock, she's. We don't, we didn't train Linda on this. We didn't even get her the manual, you know? That kind of stuff falls to John, but he didn't even know about it, so that's.
Until recently.
Right, that falls back on his training, so he didn't get the information. Are the, you know, are the department heads aware of this? They know that the manager has all this, these authorities, and there's, there's a training vol that got dropped.
Yeah, actually, too, what you're probably meaning, Lynn, is after four years, the board and the manager, actually the manager changed over to, we're probably, should have had a training session with Susan, because that was part of it. Because it's not on, it's a loss to do that, there's some additional education requirements, so maybe that's what we should have done initially. But I don't think we're that far off, though, like I said, we've been managing this pretty well, in my opinion. So, I don't think we have to scrap the whole document, but at least.
It was a lot of good work.
Change some things in there that meet our, meet what we want. And like I said before, I just don't think the reporting from, the reports that the manager was going to give us anyway, wasn't going to make, it don't bother me, because I mean, if he's not doing his work, we're going to know.
Except that the reports in here are an auditing report.
Correct.
The manager told us what he wanted us to know. That's totally counterproductive, because that's the two opposite things. He, he or she, whoever the manager is, needs to follow the guidelines we set up and report that way, not just the way he wants to or she wants to.
Yeah.
Because then there's no audit. It's just, you know, this is what I've done today. Well, but how does it relate to the policies? And again, I'm not trying to say we have to stick to every single one of these line items, and this is, this is way out of line. But this is what they tell you, after the first year, we put this in in 17, 18, we should have gone through all of them. Well, we tried, but.
But we did.
The board was kind of glossing over.
But we did sort of, and we looked at them all, and we said, and we got about halfway through the year, and we said, why are we doing this? We're taking 20 minutes of our board, precious board meeting time to go over this. And it, it hasn't changed, it isn't, you know, nothing needs to be changed, so why are we doing this?
My questions were, we didn't, we didn't, you know, go, no glosses. It didn't work before. Why didn't it work? Discuss what's wrong, understand it before we move on. You know, find someone who's doing it, and also, how, how do they do it? Do they go right by the book? Why, no, the people that I knew who used to have it, they got out of it. And then I called Downstate, and nobody in the lower Michigan is on it. But it's such a good policy, you know, it's a good thing to follow for people to do it. You wonder why, what happened? Did they just, like, oh, they didn't want it, get so structured, they much rather go to the store or someone's house to have a damn meeting like they do down there? So, but I think it's something to hang on to, and it's something that you can modify to work to our way of doing it. That's what I feel.
What's Ernie's thoughts? Have you been listening, Ernie?
I'm still here, I'm listening, and that, I think, I think, can you hear me?
Yes.
I think what John brought up is fine, I think that's, be one step for him to go through and look at everything and that. And going to, and myself going through the policy manual online here. I got to the end of it and said, well, everything should be done at a given time. We may want to look at that and see if that is still realistic in that, for us, as a board and as a township and that. I read the whole thing again this morning and that, and there's a lot of words in there, and that, there's a lot going on in there, and I think we're doing a lot of it. We just have to make sure that we're following what we said we wanted to do, and that. Here again, I'm going back to John putting together what his, his thoughts were on that, and moving in that direction to start with, and then looking at what we have to do if we want to modify any of it, or eliminate it, or enlarge it, and that, one way or another. When you look at, we're doing an awful lot of it, that we did not do before we put this into effect. So there are things that we are doing in that, and there may be some things that we should be doing, and other items that just kind of fell from the wayside in that, we didn't even address to that. So that's my feeling, is going through it and that, and I wish I had a book in front of me, I could point to more of them, because I made a few notes in that, but it's easier to have the book in front of me and that, so.
Actually, Ernie, I've got a run-up tissue meeting today. I'll get a copy before I leave here, and I'll drop it off for you.
Okay, that's fine, and that.
Tell me, I'm sorry I didn't remember that.
But I read, I read it through, it took a little time to go through and read everything, and there's an awful lot of data in there, and that, and trying to condense it down to what we want to do as a board and that, and what's best for the township overall, and that. I think John's point of moving forward, listening to things that he, he saw in there, and bring it back to us as a work session, and we'll take a look at it. That might be my feeling in that.
Yeah, and with our input too. I mean, you all need to really put some notes in there too, take this up, I'll put this in, you know.
Well, if we can make it simplifying for you, for John, you know, to make it work with all being cumbersome. And because you know, sometimes, when you do things, what am I doing? Repeating yourself or something like that, so. Make it more efficient, we get good reports from John, some of the best ones we've ever had before. We know what's going on as far as our board meetings and that, so, you know, but it just, just have to make it work, and find out why it didn't, what can we do to make it work, and so.
The biggest, the biggest overall thing the policy governance stresses is that I likened it to being a legislative member, because we're, I shouldn't say required, but if you're going to follow it, we're required to amend a policy or add a new one at every meeting. We're supposed to analyze our performance. And do I think that's necessary? No way, not for a second. But that's, that's the foundation of this. So if we want to modify it, that's probably the first direction. Because that ties back into the spreadsheet, the calendar. Of totally, every meeting, monitoring, is the board doing this? Is the board doing that? Is the manager doing this? Is on this wrong? How to report? Then we approve signing bills or checks and any other business we need to have signatures on, and we adjourn. That's it. That's what we're supposed to do. We still have our casual discussing meetings, which I like, and I think this board does. But what if we had a new manager tomorrow? What if two of our board members left this year? Now we've got a three thing. What we're comfortable with, we, it's got to be something in place that new people can do too. You know, and right now it's very disjointed, and that's all I'm trying to get to. If we want to scrap it, we scrap it. If we want to keep half, we keep it.
I think what we should do is keep a modified version of it, just figure out what we think works and what doesn't work, and get rid of what doesn't work and keep what we think works.
Yeah.
I think a lot of the drill downs, like you talked about Lynn, getting into the weeds a little bit, where you can focus more on the main points. And, and that's really what most places try to do anyway. Right? When you have a, uh, elected or, uh, and manager relationship for the back and forth, there are limits on what each can do, and everyone understanding what their limits are is really what you need to do.
Yeah.
And here, it's probably the best I've seen it of the various places I've been. As a public works employee in Ishping, I can tell you, city council members would come to the public works department to ask my staff their opinions on decisions they were making on their agenda. Oh, that was a little bit scary, because staff members have a far different opinion than their supervisor does. And it's based on a totally different set of circumstances, so. I would say here, here we don't really have that kind of, what's called meddling, right? Where everyone seems to understand what their role is, whether it's intuitive or trained through this process. Linda's brand new on the board, but I can tell you, I don't have her here meddling with staff. So she kind of knows too, to some extent. Where you learned it from, I don't know, but I think it is part of a process anytime you have, have a, a board and staff relationship like that.
Well, you know that what don't work, John, you know, from your previous, you know what the hell didn't work?
Yeah.
And how you didn't like what people did. And so I don't think we're there. I don't think we have some, we might, we got some of them a little problem, but I mean, nothing to extend some of the other places have, you know.
No, and you know, kudos to everybody that set us up to this point, because it makes my job that much easier. I would say this is the first position where I haven't felt that divisive type of environment. And that's a huge deal, because you don't have to worry about what's going on behind your back all the time. That's my opinion.
Yeah.
See if I can give you guys a, kind of a quick update on where we are. Wait till John gets, gets himself oriented.
Has Mark and who's here?
Senator Peterson. It's been a long time. At least I only have one other.
Well, we kind of addressed briefly the, like, the definition of policy governance and that we adopted this in 2017. And we haven't really, we looked at it, tried to look at it the next year in 2018. We put together a calendar based on policy governance recommendations, of discussing our policies every month, different ones. And when I started to think about how we were going to do strategic planning this year, it dawned on me that I had made mention here that half of these policies are, are a good portion of them, we aren't doing. So I started thinking, well, we either need to get rid of these or enforce them and actually do them. And then I started thinking about the, how that ties into strategic planning and that we've got, put the CIP together, we need to have the joint meeting with the planning commissions. And that's why I recommended Susan, that she would know how to tie all these together, so we could just have one meeting and not have it be four different things we were trying to work on this year, because it's such a disjointed year anyway. We've lost pretty much three months already. We don't have staff. John's at the point where he needs to figure out, what does the board want me to do? How do I report? How do I answer them? Who do I report to? What does the board want to do this year? What do we want to accomplish for the next five years? He needs some direction and some structure, which is why I went back to the policy manual and said, does this work? So I kind of started crossing things off and thinking, well, we don't do this, we don't need this, do we need this? So that's kind of what our discussion so far has been about. And the consensus with the three or four of us was, and John suggested, that he look at the manual from his perspective, because policy governance is predominantly for the manager. What the manager is not allowed to do based on board, pop, these board policies. So John says, well, you know, maybe I look at it and I kind of redline it and bring it back to the board and see how that fits what, what we think, if, if it, you know, if it does work, if it fits. And then I said, yeah, we should all do that, and all do our little red lines and, and have another work session ourselves, that we don't need to have Susan come and facilitate. And just see where we are with this. We kind of agreed, we don't want to scrap it completely, but that it's a little overly burdensome, because it's so detailed and some of the reporting requirements are very strict. The book says that the board should amend a policy or add a new one at almost every meeting. But we don't do that, you know, because then you're down to this. You don't know if you remember this, John. Remember the calendar, John, that we worked on a couple of years ago? Remember?
Yeah, I do, I have.
How strenuous that was. So every meeting, we talked about a different one of the policies and analyzed, is it okay, is it going to work? Does it function? Blah, blah, blah. It was very time consuming, besides putting this together. So do we need that? I don't think so. And, and the four of us kind of don't think so. I mean, that's what we're here for, is to get your input. How, how much effort do we want to put into this? How important is it? Does it work? Um, it kind of seems like half of it's good. The policies are good, the structure's good. We just kind of need to whittle it down a little bit, that kind of a synopsis of, of where we are. So if everybody kind of puts their thoughts together and maybe we schedule another work session. So from the policy governance side, we can kind of handle that. From the strategic planning side, we need to figure out what we're going to do for the next few years. We can't just kind of, just keep having board meetings and deal with what's right now. We need to look ahead. We need to look at the water project. I got a dozen things that we started to talk about over the years that we have not had closure to. Some we have and some we haven't. So what do we do with those? What do we do with the Swamwood property? Do we just leave it there? Do we try to develop it? Do we fix the road? You know, what about the water project? Do we go have a phase two? Um, do we get updated prices? I don't care specifically about any of these, but there are board items that the township has discussed in the past or wanted to do, so we need to address them until they're off the table.
So don't we have a strategic plan?
We do, but it's pretty much done.
Well, then you have, we have, well.
We have a new one that was kind of put in place, but nothing.
Well, that's why you build your plan of this strategic plan, because that input came from the residents. Is that correct? Did the residents have input into this strategic?
Not the current one, we started working on.
Oh.
That's, it just got dropped.
Oh, well, maybe that's the place to start with. Um, you know, let, let me just add, that's what wasn't here, and I get to add now, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so policies are meant to help us govern. And it's written down so that everyone can understand what it is. I went through this. I read this. It's a lot of, I, I feel like somebody took it out of someone's book and put it, dropped it in. I, I don't think, maybe someone started to set that. I, I think policies are most important, so people understand where we are. And I think they need to be reviewed annually. But I don't think you want to take up them every meeting. And I think you could even review them once every four years by breaking it into a section. And kind of going section one, section two, section three, section four. I got to tell you, this is like, um, I like sold you a bill of goods and you bought it. We created that. Well, I know, but somebody helps.
Right.
Someone always helps you create things. And somebody, I could find someplace else where it says almost exactly word for word. I agree. I think we all need to go through it and see. I don't have the expertise from the last four years to necessarily have as much input as the people who have been here. And I think John, Angus and I are probably in the same place, because we're new. But I do think we have some great ideas. Um, and I love strategic planning, but, and I think that's where we should build. Where do you want to be in ten years? Where do you want to be in twenty? Where do you want to be in five? And then build your plan out. But I, I have to tell you, this is extremely cumbersome and it doesn't make any sense. And the planning commission, they're going to go like, that's not, I don't really hear about that.
I think that's why they failed. A lot of these people failed. They looked at something like this and they, they're not going to do this.
Too much, yeah.
My proposal was to come back to something that fits the KISS principle, keep it simple, stupid.
Yeah.
Right? And if you can keep it simple, it's much easier, you'll get far more participation.
And it works.
Right. You, you don't want something that only makes life more difficult.
And there are some rules we already have to follow from the state. So we just follow what the state government tells us our jobs and roles and responsibilities and what we have to do.
Yeah.
I, I mean, make it too hard and people are, are going to, your bonds will fail. That's what I'll tell you.
I think everything in here, I've seen practiced to one level or another everywhere I've been. It's just never been put down in such great detail, and it doesn't need to be in so much detail. And really, what I think, exactly what you said, if you review it annually, you're going to find where your weaknesses are pretty quickly.
That's what Randy said.
Especially when you have untrained new people coming in. And, and I'll be the first to admit that I'm, I'm both of those categories to an extent, right? So I think Linda and I might be able to provide as much positive input on this as those of you that have been around for four years, so.
Because you're looking at it from different eyes too, from different perspectives.
I agree.
Yeah, and I think once you hear a review of it, and I think you make your policies easy to read and easy to use and global governance processes, I'm going, oh my gosh, really? And we can probably say governance process. I mean, you know, every time Lynn says linkage stuff, I'm thinking, what's really possible here?
Yeah.
And I know those are the trendy terms, but I also know that policy governance is relatively new. Like, it's not very old at all, and I'd be real curious to know, what does it really mean? I mean, I looked up the definition, but it just means you have policies that you've governed by.
Yeah.
Or policies you adhere to. And it, I, I think you have to make them simple.
I agree.
We want our employees to understand.
We're going to get along just fine, Linda.
I, I showed this to another township.
Did they go?
And, and the answer was, you look through it, you do this, and they had to work. I said, you should do that too.
Right.
So I got his answer, and he said, right.
So what's your feeling, John? You've been here for the last eight years.
What do you think?
I guess what I want to say is I can understand everybody's desire to attempt to put something on paper that we can all follow. That's, that's what we all desire to achieve. Government is not that simple, damn it. Yeah, I, I don't know what more to say about it. Government is a complex issue. And it isn't easily put into a few words. And it isn't easily put into language that we could expect somebody to walk in off the street and be able to understand and follow. It, it just doesn't work that way. It should, but it doesn't. So what we have as a chore before us is to, I think is to kind of take these things and separate them and then over a period of time, address them with what we think would be acceptable communication to most people. It isn't going to be enough for everybody. But that's, that's what I think our goal should be, is to come around. Don't, don't try to take away the complicated issues that have been addressed. Look at what would be followed for us to share. Over the years, um, one of us has, has, from time to time, tried to write what we thought was acceptable. And it's very difficult to have, have a seven-member board agree that that is acceptable. And, and Lynn, you can't win. I think, I think we all need to work at it, but I don't think we should. I guess the way that we can accomplish our goal is not to try to do it in one big package. It isn't going to work. You're going to have to take it and separate it and look at, look at items that make sense to be talked about at one time and then graduate to the next and do that. That would be my suggestion that we, we don't, don't try to do it all overnight, because it isn't going to work. And let's just look at it with a level head and, and not get too detailed about it. But I think it's going to be a long, drawn-out process. It isn't going to happen overnight. And we may make some mistakes along the way, but I think we need to, I do think we need to look at it and work at it. But I'm not so sure that we can't do that with the intelligence we've got on the board. I don't think we necessarily, we could have guidance later, but I think we better take the first step by ourselves.
Did you, have you been through to maybe redline, or did you have any comments?
Well, I've got notes, but.
So you could, you could.
I'm sure everybody does.
You could put them, yeah. That's what I was thinking. If we all have our, our thoughts and they come back in another work session.
Yeah.
Maybe Randy can put it up on the board.
Good suggestion. Walk away from this thing. And for the most part, for those of us that can do it, take the time to make some notes. But I would suggest that you even take your chapters. But I would suggest that you even take your chapters and say, let's come back with chapter one, or let's come back with chapter two in our notes. Don't try to take it beyond that. You know, I write all the time.
Okay.
Not that I make sense, but I.
And if you look at this, this is a strategic plan of sorts, because right here under ends, which let's have a better word than ends, cause I'm thinking that's the end of everything. Right here, it says access to safe pathways throughout the township. Is that one of our goals? Do we want that in twenty years? What do we want that to look like? So you've sort of, this is sort of more of a strategic plan in my mind.
Which is why I was trying to tie together.
But we do have to, you know, and it is, and then they go, and they keep breaking it out. Engagement of multi-generational activity? Really?
In this day and age, it should be, we should be focusing on what are the terms? Equity and equitable, which means you focus on your entire population, not just segments.
Yeah, and that, yeah, just say, focus on the population of the township. Because that's what we should be concerned about.
Well, it depends and keeps changing, you know, Randy always said that we've got, you know, fewer families before and now there are more families coming in. More people, more people that wanna be out, you know, the older generation retiring to the township. Like me. Um, so the same thing, it's, it's a fluid thing, which is why we have to pay attention in the strategic plan all the time. And that's why I figured if we could up, uh, update the policies, tie it into the strategic plan, out of that comes your capital improvement. And then it's closed into the double meeting with the planning and the board. And that's why I just suggested Susan, cause it's a lot easier for an outsider to facilitate this than for John and me to try to to put all this together. This is time-consuming. So I can see what, I, you know, everybody kinda said, well, we don't need to spend that money right now. I didn't mean right now, I figured by the time she could get up at the end of the month, this was a month ago now, that we would have some of this kind of in place to work with.
I think it's gonna take a year, okay, to be the, the dog person, but that's gonna take a lot longer than a month.
I think I could take half of this and a bunch of John could too and just get rid of it right now. And that would be done.
And then that's the way to start then, then get rid of it, then start working on what it is that's important, but these are really strategic plans. Needs traffic control and safety, that's not a policy.
Well, yeah, why should it be?
It should be, it's a plan, we wanna.
The ends, we pretty much, we keep the first one and we scratch the rest off, is what I said before.
Where are the policies? Because it's never looked like anything like a policy.
Well, but remember, policy governance falls to the manager. It's what policies do we have in place that we want him to adhere to? It's not so much, it's, it's not gauge to we're thinking more strategic planning.
Where are those policies? Where are the policies that John? Those aren't called township policies, right?
That's what this is.
But this is.
Yes, yes, this is like ninety-five percent, John.
Right, but where's the policy of the, you know, where, when I had policies.
You're thinking of something else.
Yeah.
Page document that establishes the role, the roles that you and I play. This is the policy that establishes the roles that myself and staff play. So you've got a thirty-five page document for our relationship. And then a, a fifty-five page document for mine and staff's relationship, how we function. I think this one, so this is thirty-five pages with a cover sheet. I think this one could be five pages plus a cover sheet. That's my opinion.
Handcuffs. Where, where, where it focuses on our relationship, not the relationship of where the township's going.
No, no, that's what I said, that's more strategic plan.
Five years ago, four years ago, this policy governance was just out there. Didn't it just start in two thousand sixteen?
We looked at it in seventeen.
I know, but I don't think it was established in two thousand sixteen.
Carver was way before two thousand nine. It's relatively new, like you said, but it's not brand new. This is, I've heard about this at, well, almost all the MTA.
You could make it a lot shorter, and if it's about the relationship between the board and the manager, let's have it say that and not say traffic safety. Nothing about the relationship between the manager and, unless we're gonna put you outside of.
Yeah, I, I understand the connection to this being the means to the ends that, and I don't like the word either. I think there's a lot of catchphrases that get used that really, in John's words, the words and, and maybe I shouldn't suggest that, but the way of effectively communicating it so everyone can understand is the biggest challenge, right? And I, I feel like a good quarter of my education at Michigan Tech was focused on communication, and I was a horrible communicator. Um, fortunately, I've had a lot of good mentors over the years to help me get better at it, but I think it's always worth the progress too, so. Like I said, I think this one could be pared down from thirty-five to five pages. And say the same thing in a much more effective way, but I agree with John, it won't happen overnight.
And, and I don't think that this stuff is bad. Do you know, I mean, I think it's important that we as a township focus on our infrastructure with traffic control and safety. I mean, I, I agree with that stuff, but I don't think it's a policy.
It's part of the CIP and strategic plan.
So maybe it's just moving things to a different place where we feel they belong.
It reads like somebody's thesis. That's where our problem is. And we're not here to judge the wisdom of, of the thesis. It's, we're trying to get to a goal of being able to communicate in simple terms what our basic principles are, that's all. And I don't think, frankly, I don't think most of the public gives a damn about that. They, they really just, they expect you to, if you're elected to office, to do the best you can. Unfortunately, we've got a board that is doing that. But they don't, they don't really wanna know about the details. They really don't, they, they, they wanna know who's responsible and who is expected to carry out what they elected you to do. That's all they care, that, that, after that, they don't, they're gonna read the paper.
I just like to access through it, access through the pathway.
And I don't blame them, I, if you take a look at what's going on at all the levels of government, how can you get interested in, in running for office? You have to be a, you have to be a, somebody that's willing to be punished. It's, it's really bad and, and I, I think we have to just keep that in mind as we go along. We don't, they don't expect you to do everything, they just want you to do it all so that you run. And they expect you to be fair and they expect you to stay at it uh, until you're out of office.
Like, like we said a minute ago, Linda brought up access to a pathway. You know, we're, we're not gonna work on that, we're gonna turn it over to the red committee or the road committee or whatever committee. And they're gonna come back with recommendations, now we're discussing. You know, we don't have to do that.
But that's a strategic planning.
Yeah, right.
That's not a governance.
Yeah, well, we don't have to worry about that.
It is from the perspective, so when we did this, we did the ends first, which was kind of confusing to me anyway. I, I got it after, in that, what do you wanna accomplish? What do you, how do you see, you know, the township functioning? What's important? So we did this first and then the, the rest of the policies. But again, it's how the manager interprets them and runs based on what the board wants. And I had a conversation with somebody once and he said, referring to Randy, what does he think he does, does run the township? And I said, yeah, he does run the township. That's his job as the manager. Yeah, they run it based on what the board says, so to, to the end that you don't know who's gonna be on the board or what kind of people or what kind of manager you're gonna hire. The manager needs to know what to do and what we expect. So that this, this is our policies on how we want things run. And it's done in a negative way, cause it says shall not. Manager shall not, or the management shall not. And it does stress to have you look at individual job descriptions to make sure what the trustees do, what the supervisor's responsible for. And we went through that when we did our little audit. We took time and looked at each one of them, are we all doing that? Yeah, okay, go on to the next one. So it's a different kind of policy manual. It's our contract with our only employees. You know, that how, how does he perform what this board expects? So the end side of it is more detailed, so that he knows, as much as I think it can be taken off. So he knows specifically what the goal is. So that's the intent. But I totally agree, that's why I said some of this has to go. Um, it's just, it is written like a thesis, I agree with you a hundred percent. And in that respect, I think Susan dropped the ball, but that's the way huge board, she doesn't just work with township governments. She works with corporations and boards that do adhere to this, you know, to the letter. So that's the presentation we got, unfortunately, and I'm thinking it was like a hundred percent, cause she said, well, I can, you know, we can go through this again, and I said, Susan, it needs to be cut, yeah. She goes, what do you mean? It's too much, there's, it's too much, it's too much to function regardless of us or who's on the board or who's a manager. It's not workable. And that's why when she, her first proposal to me was almost eight thousand dollars. And I said, no, no, you need to cut that like in quarters, so she came down to whatever it was, eighteen hundred or something. She understood what I was trying to get her to, to help us with. Uh, but I think we can do some of the legwork, I think John's got a really good idea, even just from this meeting, what we think. Besides what he brings to the table. That, um, we can come up with something that's a little more workable. And then, whatever you think we wanna do with strategic planning, we can resurrect the one that we kinda started. And we're kind of ourselves, or if you wanna bring Susan in just to do that, it might be cheaper. We've gotta think about the CIP, which is, it will come off of the strategic plan.
What is CIP?
Capital Improvement Plan, which
Connected to your strategic plan.
It is, yeah.
And is it done yearly?
A few years ago, the government moved the responsibility of the CIP to the Planning Commission.
Oh, do they?
Yes, yeah, no, it was when I was a commissioner, it had started then, so that's, I don't know, five, eight years ago.
Who's on that board that was on that family?
The Planning Commission, nobody. Nobody, it's all different.
I, I just wanna, while we're talking, I'm looking at some things that I made some notes on. And I won't, I won't labor you with that now, but I do wanna read one thing that I was surprised that I wrote. Our charter township board has a specific authority to adopt rules. In fact, having rules is by law mandatory. It is not required that such rules be written. However, most would believe written rules are preferably unwritten rules. Now, I know that seems like bobbly good. But that's one of my notes from my December twelfth, twenty sixteen letter to the board. So back then, we were thinking about stuff like that.
Yeah, cause we got into governance right after that.
Let you take a look at this if you want, but I don't know that it makes sense, but sometimes it is unwritten.
Well, when you have cases like ours, when the whole board can be gone or not, and you don't know about your staffing, it is in any company or corporation. You, you do have to have some structure and that's all I'm trying to get to. They do need to be written down.
That's so.
And taught, you know, you guys got left out of the loop.
Give me a copy of this when I was first hired. But
From the Yeah.
There wasn't much discussion about it. In fact, I think we talked about it more in my two job interviews for this position than I did prior to that point. So, um, it's just one of those things where I knew policy governance was the way of marketing township, but I didn't, didn't really truly know what it meant. Having read through it, it's not really that surprising, it's just written in a far more complicated way as, as we've heard suggested. And I think we need to put it in plain English, so, and keep it simple.
Okay, so, Bernie, you didn't get a chance to interject too much, any thoughts?
Well, I'm listening to all you people and that, some of the things I've written down, going to the manual, or call it whatever you want, policy manual, that, there's a lot of stuff in there. Going back in time. There really wasn't anything when a new board member came on as to what they could or could not do or be involved with, it was word of mouth and you hope you got it right. A couple of things I've written down is some kind of policy from the board to the manag, to, to the manager, what can or cannot be done in that by board. Also, on the board to the residents of the township. Reaction to that, and then the, another partially is the manager to their staff, to the staff, things like this. There's, kinda simplified it that, but also develop some kind of a reporting structure, which that, it addresses as a whole and a timeframe for items to be done. And to report back to who and that, those are, that's in there too. Identify those items that need to be, uh, addressed yearly. All those items are in there, it's, there's a lot, there are a lot of words in there, but we may be able to condense it down, but those are the items that we have to have available to, not only to us, but any new, new board member that comes on, so they know where they stand. When I came on, both, the number of times, the couple of times I came on, you just came on and you had no idea and that. And that's kinda like it in a lot of the corporations I've been involved with and that. You, some they had policies, some they didn't and that. It's a lot easier when you have something written down that you can just start asking questions and that. Maybe get some answers in that, but you have some, some direction to go and that. Like I said before, John came up with some good ideas at the beginning. I think to follow through on that and then move forward and that, I'm talking about the manager now and that, so. We go from there and that. That's it.
Okay, so, do you see us?
Then I, I think what we need is the full board. Frankly, I think need to take a look at what they've got here. And come up with two areas that they would like us to give some more thoughts to. And then make sure you have a consensus of the board as a total board and our manager. As to what we will look at and make notes on and come back to another meeting one day. And make notes on and come back to another meeting one day. And talk about it.
Okay, that's, that's what I was just gonna say. I'm sure everybody's got some thoughts as they read through this and they can put sticky notes or yellow or whatever they want.
I figured I ought to turn section one into basically one sentence.
Okay.
I think the ends for this document. Should be creating an effective relationship between the township board and its manager.
So that would answer my question. It says, what's the intent of this? Policy man, what is the intent?
The relationship between the board and the manager.
So the intent is the relationship. So all this streetcar thing or the traffic control, that's nothing to do with. Relationship between. All board members?
The township board and the township manager.
It does, the, I see how that got in there because it impresses to the manager, whoever it is. Especially, you know, Jane Smith. Let's say we hired her tomorrow. She doesn't know what's important to the township, right?
But that's a separate um, document.
But it isn't. This is what this is supposed to be.
Yeah, so um, so it's just very confusing by its title, but the policy we're, what we're gonna look at. Is the policy, the intent of the policy manual is to define the relationship, define.
That's probably.
Between the township board and the township manager.
Right.
Okay, and then who is gonna use this? Who is this gonna be available to?
We're supposed to monitor this and see if the manager is doing what.
So this is an evaluation tool.
Arsh.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you're monitoring what the employee is doing, then you're evaluating them for their. Annual review all year long.
That's actually what this thing does come down to and yeah.
We never did any of the reports.
So people gave up. So is it a public document?
No.
It's, it would be foible, but it's our working.
So it's not a public post. Okay, so who uses it as the board members?
The eight of us.
Does the Planning Commission use it?
No.
And the township manager. So it's really us and our employee.
Today. And it's how we see running the township.
Yes, but that's probably defined somewhere else as well, that by state law, there's probably a definition of how townships are run.
Right. No, I don't mean at the legislative level. I mean at the accomplishment level. How do we, how do we want him to perform? In this case, it goes backwards. What should he not do? Going against what we have established as the end.
Yes, yeah, so it should be flipped.
Yeah, that's the whole thing with policy governance. It says, you have discretion as the manager. To run the township. This is what's important to us. So you would do it from this perspective, but you shall not. You know, steal money. Not inform the board. Goes through everyone. That's pages and pages of you shall not. Do it in this manner.
So should be able to just. I love bullets. You should be able to do that in bullet. You shall not.
What we're not gonna do, what we don't want to do is tell them how to do the job.
Well, you kind of are. I know, I know that, but in in reality in your workplace, you can um, take, take my employee. I can tell her what she's not allowed to do and what she is allowed to do, and that's pretty much it. It's saying you can't go outside that world.
But that's different because he's implementing. That he's the go-between with how his staff operate and how we want them. It's easier to say thou shall not than it is to try to list all the things he can do.
Yeah.
So if we give him our criteria of what we think is important to focus on. He can get that done, but he's not allowed to do them these ways.
Yeah, it's all just very interesting.
It is. It's very.
And you know, as a new board member. Nowhere did it say, I couldn't go and and go to the public works department and, you know, tell the staff what to do. I mean, some of that is.
But it does in your job description. Which is also reviewed.
Yeah, so it's very interesting, you know. I I mean, I think you can just, yeah.
But again, what, this is the board. And what we all forget sometimes is that we're individual members. But when we're here, as soon as we walk out that door, it's nothing, you know. So we wouldn't have authority as an individual to go in and ask staff for information. We don't as an individual, which is why the question came up before. Should we go through the manager for that? And I said at the time when I was a trustee. I went to staff and I ruffled feathers because I was looking for information. And I shouldn't have.
Right, that's a chain of command.
Right, and that that's what part of this is too.
Yeah, but that's easy to put down in it. And you know, it's just, it's very hard to understand. There's so much in here and us. The people that we get to be on this board live here in Market Township. That's who runs, the people here. Those people. A small percentage of them probably would read this through and figure it all out.
Yeah, read again.
Most of. Most of us are, you know, let's be real.
We need plain Ubert English.
Yeah.
It takes, takes all the multi-syllabics and.
Yeah, those people just, and you know, it's hard enough to get people to um, run. Or to be involved. We could have a whole discussion on that, why people don't do that, but. Yeah, so yeah, the the um. The more user friendly we can make our documents, the better for us. Because none of us are gonna be here forever, except Randy. And he's not either.
You know, I I guess the part of it is that we don't interfere with someone we hired who's got the expertise in doing things.
Correct, correct.
We're lucky to John has because he can help Lenny and different things like that, you know. But we don't always have that experience to do something. And you don't want us to do, stick our nose into it.
Yeah, that's why this is like a general.
That's been a problem. At some point, it's not necessarily here, but you know, that's been a problem, which is why all this stuff gets written. Like I would tell people, you know, you're not gonna like the policy I'm gonna write, so you know, really. At which point do you want to push it? So, yeah. Because it always affects. Everyone. When there was only quote, my mom was, they one bad apple in the bushel.
I I tell my wife what to do too, but sometimes I don't always work.
So, but I think it will take longer than you think. Because things always take longer than you think. I think strategic planning should be one of our top priorities. I think that's really important for people to know where we're going and I listen to the city commission. I'm looking for affordable housing and kind of the ideas they came up with and, you know, I just kind of shake my head. We have affordable housing in Market Township if we can get people to um, wanna live where we all live. We we do have affordable housing.
But we, that's gonna be a problem if we don't have what they really want.
And stuff like that. The guys don't have the problem. We just hire people with a big net. Special management. They have a problem with the wives.
They don't want to stay here.
They're not enough here for them.
Well, they're. Well, anyways, I mean, I just think that we should say these are our priorities and it. Our priority used to be that we wanted to be. Um, that kind of livable community where we have lots to offer people. I don't know that that's changed. I think, well, I think from a strategic planning place, we need to say, you know, are we gonna, where do we want to go? What do we, what do our, what do our residents want us to do and? I know the vocal residents always get up in front. It's the non-vocal people that I want to hear. I want to hear the twenty-five-year-olds. I want to know what they want.
It's changed, it's changed over the last ten years.
I I know what the sixty-five-year-olds want. I mean, you know, reasonable. We know what they want. Cheap taxes. Grocery stores close. I mean, you know, really. And not a lot of traffic. They don't dwell on traffic.
Well, and everything you just said is relative, right? It's relative to what your neighbors have. So if you want cheap taxes, we've got it. If you want to compare it to the city, right? If you want it compared to, I don't know. Sands Township, maybe we don't. I I guess I haven't ever really compared them that much, but. I think we have a good range of services at a very affordable cost.
So anyways, I I still love that strategic plan and, you know, where do we see it in twenty years and who would have thought we would tap around abouts? I certainly did not see that.
I always compare Market to Esquinava, Iron Mountain, and then Hope, you know, that's where it's, they're different things. I asked my neighbor one time, I said, what would, what do you, what would you like to get to? And I was trying to give this, say, something about township, he said, I'd like to get your garage.
I I do think you have to go and ask people. I don't think you can set a survey. Um, I don't think you can invite them to a meeting. I think you have to walk the streets and go to the parks and I think you have to ask.
One best one we have was on the road commission. For that, that one comes, the people came out and they said what's on their mind and that was really one of the best ones I've been.
Really impacted everyone. The roads impact the world.
And by, by the way, Lynn, did you know John Swine? Just come in for the meetings and stuff, that big guy who lives up by. And Bishop Wood.
I think I do.
He's pretty active and him and Pauline even go to town, but John died yesterday.
So sorry, I probably took more time.
Yeah, you did.
Okay, so from the policy governance side, we're going to look at each one of our own books. Kind of redline it, sticky noted, highlight it, whatever. Manager's gonna do the same thing. We'll get together again. We can put it on the next agenda and set a work session for maybe the end of the month. We'll see what the full board wants to do. Um, strategic planning, if you want me to resurrect the one that was in place that we didn't really go anywhere with. Get it out to you if you think you don't have it, you may not have it. We can at least look at it by the next meeting and have some general conversation. See what if we want to hire Susan, if we think that we can all do it together. Uh, if we want to give it to John to coordinate, you know, figure out how we want to take the next step. Um, out of that will come the Capital Improvement Plan. But we need to structure or set up the joint meeting that should have happened in January. Um, with the Planning Commission and the only reason I'm trying to push that is because they're gonna start to get busy. By April, they're gonna be looking at site plans. We've got a lot of development coming to the township, a lot. So they're gonna be busy. They may be doing three meetings a month with work sessions, so I don't want to cover. Cover them too much. Um, but we really need to have, because we need this stuff for the budget too, you know, so it's a segue. Policy governance ties into strategic planning, which will give us the CIP, which ties into the joint meeting. So that we can do the budget, you know, so it's, it's, that was my plan to try to put all these together and just have one meeting. But it didn't happen that way, so.
So the Planning Commission meets tonight.
Yes.
And then they meet again on the twenty-fourth.
Did we have a tentative date? I think Jason said or.
Uh, we have a little bit of a, a mix of responses on that. Some.
We kind of took.
There were three days. The first and the third day received the most votes, but also the most conflicts.
It doesn't have to be a night of a meeting, and I think that's what Jason was trying to accomplish. It can be just.
Well, because then you're asking people to do one more.
Which is again, why I was trying to tie them all into one period for all of us.
Now, also one other thing that you need to keep in mind, and I have the date in front of me, I think it might be, well, it's one of the meetings in April. M dot is going to have a public information meeting in the first hour before. The township board meeting. So we want to schedule around that as well because that's another hour of commitment for anyone that's.
Our, our meeting's in April, April sixth and the twentieth.
And then.
Sixth and the twentieth.
There's some public hearings coming for the um, Maryland.
Commission?
Right.
So you know, again, who knows how involved those will end up being.
It's hard to say.
It's hard to say.
Yeah, I didn't write down that M does. It's on my email somewhere. Well, maybe you and I can put this together in the next week, figure out. A joint meeting, because you know, by June, we're gonna have budget numbers. This is already the end of March just about. So we need to do this in the next month.
So you're gonna send a strategic plan that you started. I'll be there. Are there not any local people that can run a strategic planning session?
The only one that I know personally, and I can't think of her name, blonde, small, skinny. She did our first one, I think. Randy, you might remember.
I I don't.
At the old call?
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Can't think of her name. Skinny and small.
Married to the surveyor.
Yeah, but there have to be some people at the university that.
His wife.
Yeah.
Whose wife?
What's her last name? Ben Ness.
But she, but she doesn't go over that. She was, but she did our first.
Not Ruth Swolinski.
No.
No, I I've been in sessions.
She's an HR person.
Pardon me?
Ruth is an HR specialist.
Yeah.
Right?
Yes.
But she might be retired now anyways, so.
I know who you're thinking of. Um. She lives in Cyrus Hills, where they use.
No, they live over on Hopper Fair.
Well, anyway, I'm sure there are people in our community, um, because Carol Tamsa's done things too, you know, and she's. But I I mean, I'm sure there's younger people. I'm sure at the university, they have some people that do this all the time. I can ask. Around, um, I think sometimes it's good to have someone that we don't have to pay travel and we're not looking at them on a TV screen and. And I also always think it's good to get those students at the university involved in some things, so. Teaching them to lead strategic planning sessions is is probably a great thing, you know, we all, we all know about the little sticky dots and all those pieces, but. I would like the community to come, so. I guess you have to roast them out or provide them with something.
Food usually does.
Price drying, when a hundred dollars.
What's up, John?
I just want to throw in a little something. I personally do not think. That the township board is prepared. To tell the Planning Commission what they expect of them. I really don't think that.
Yeah, as a plan, a new planning commissioner, and the other person I forgot, Bethany. Bethany, I'm sure Bethany and I have no idea what we're doing or what's.
I don't, I don't think that, I don't think that the township board as a whole. Is prepared to say, this is what we expect of you in the next year. I think if anybody is, it's gonna be the person who appoints the people. To the township board and who relates with the. To the planning commission and you relate with the township board. I think you're in a better position. To pass on the feelings of the board as to what they expect of the. Planning commission. I really believe that. I don't think, if you called up. The township board and said, let's all sit down with the planning commission. And we'll tell them tomorrow what we expected from next year. You would hear a big dead silence.
Well, that's not the intent. It's not for us to direct them. It's not that kind of a meeting. It's, it's a joint meeting, kind of like what we used to do with the city, is where are you? What do you, what are you gonna be working on? Where does that fall in? You know, if we have a strategic plan done. That's something we want to share with the planning commission. If they work through it with us like they did a few years ago, it saved a whole meeting. We didn't have to. We worked on it together. So the intent is, is the, the relationship is where are we now? Where are we going? That's what we want to talk about. It's not giving direction or, or it's, it's, that's again, why. Why I tried to combine it with the strategic agenda and that planning, so that we know we're going together. If they're gonna be making any new ordinances in the future. They need to know how we feel, how, how, what are our goals? What do we wanna look at? So if we have a five and a ten and a twenty years strategic plan, they're gonna know how to gauge those ordinances. We don't have to talk about specifics. We just need to know, they need to know what the township feels. We have a new board member. They have new board members. We have a new manager.
So, so then what you're saying is we need, the strategic plan is what we need to do first. But, so you can meet with the planning commission and say, we're gonna do a strategic planning session. We want you to be part of this.
Which is what I was gonna have Susan do all of that. Again, this is four different things I was gonna try to do in one meeting. We've done it before. We've done it before. The CIP came out of it, the strategic plan came out of it. And we solved the, the required joint meeting.
So, so you, you could do all that, but I, I still feel like you have some brand new planning mission people. Who are, are, aren't gonna know what's going on.
Well, that's part of the plan. That's a part of the planning.
Yeah, it's part of, but it's gonna take, it's gonna take a little bit of time to pull all that together.
But they have to know what, what, where we wanna take the town.
Where do we want?
Where to go and take the township.
Yeah.
The planning commission comes up with after we decide where, what we wanna see, they like to see. And then if people come in and then they plan this and plan that, different things like that.
Yeah, then they.
They have to know what we want and where we wanna take the township. That's a board thing.
It is, but they're a tool of ours to use, so we should do it together.
Exactly.
Wait, but where do we wanna go? Where, yeah, where is the strategic? Where, where, where did the board last year before the election want to go? In five years, ten years and twenty years? What did they see? Or did we not get to that part yet?
We had items in there. We didn't, I think we did have years.
Because that's really what, and then the manager needs to. And what does the staff see? Because they're out there. Do they give you some information?
Well, it doesn't even make sense anymore, so.
I can tell you this past year, there hasn't been a lot of that communication because we've been so fragmented with. Yeah. Only a couple of us being in the office every day.
Right, right, and so. So when in, in the defense of not getting quite where we should be at this point, um, we have been met faced. This is the first time we've met face to face.
With this, with this board, correct?
Right, and so it's gonna take, it's probably gonna take a year to pull this all back together.
Well, I told, I told Lynn, twenty twenty was a lost school.
Right, I talked about the school.
In actually twenty twenty one, the first half of it will be lost.
Right, and then we'll pick it back up.
So I, I was telling, and even I was telling John, twenty twenty two, hopefully things will be normal. And we can maybe start fresh again.
Whatever normal's gonna be.
So you're thinking we should just kinda go on like.
Well, we should, we should gauge it for twenty.
Nine months and do nothing.
Well, twenty twenty two, I mean, we, we're not out of this yet.
Right, right, that's gonna.
Yeah, but COVID can't control the destiny of the township. We need to figure as a board how we're gonna proceed.
It can't control the destiny, but it does control who meets and, you know.
We can get around that. We can do this on Zoom or not. It doesn't make any difference. We have a responsibility to guide the township. And I don't think it's a good idea to wait nine months and start next year. That's a waste of good valuable time.
Well.
Well, is that, that, I don't, I don't hear him saying that. I hear him saying that we're not gonna be able to. Do the same thing we would have been able to do without COVID. So yes, I think we can make a plan. But again, I'm asking, you know, we have, have to get that plan going, so we need John to ask his staff. You just ask them, what do you see out there? What would you like to see? They're the eyes and ears of the township. No matter what we all think, when Lenny or whoever is out there digging a hole, you can be assured there's three people. Top it. And maybe it's the staff talking to each other, maybe it's the neighbors, maybe it's someone who's staff. However, people share information with people they're comfortable with. Okay, you never tell the. You never tell the policeman what's going on after the accident, but you always tell the EMS people, okay? Cuz they're comfortable with them, so they're comfortable. So ask your employees. We all need to make an effort to go up, ask our friends, ask our neighbors. Ask our kids, ask our grandchildren. What are they, where do they see? I, I hope I see that mall turned into something usable, not like they turn them into in Florida. Okay, I mean, I hope they can figure that out, whoever they are. But, but let's, let's get that plan going and we can meet with the planning commission anytime. You already met with us.
I've been personally.
Right, and you're the one that was shut, John's.
No, because when I go to that meeting, I'm a citizen. I'm not the super supervisor. I'm not allowed to wear that hat.
Well, that isn't what I felt at that meeting.
No, not.
I, I didn't feel you were the supervisor. I felt you were sharing information with them.
That's not my job either.
But you are the spokesperson for the township board.
Only when the township board directs me to do it. I did not.
So we need to have the township board direct you to meet with the planning.
It's in our policies that we need.
As a whole.
And the law states that there needs to be a joint meeting.
There's a legislative.
So then let's have the joint meeting and, and, and agenda.
So let me back up. I didn't say that we should just wait for nine months.
Right.
We should start, so we need a plan on this meeting, which I think Lynn had. Go over this document and kinda whittle it down. And then we have to schedule a meeting with the planning commission. And that's about, then we move forward from there. Strategic planning started going and then we'll be back on track.
So then what did, when you met with the planning commission in the past, what was the agenda like? What, what, when you were on the planning commission and the board met with you, your group, what did they bring to the table?
It was tied into strategic planning.
Oh, see.
Yes.
And that's probably what we, we could invite them and do that in one meeting and do that.
But you still need a facilitator, so if you want somebody besides Susan, I don't care. I just don't wanna have to set that up. Cuz I know how involved.
John, who do you know out there that's facilitated meetings you've been to?
Um, nobody locally.
Or Rita Hodges.
Rita, yeah. Yeah, I think she's been a nice job.
She might do it though. You could have to call her and see. She might do it, you know, she's local.
And Ruth Solinsky might do it too. She. Keep my mouth shut.
John can. And can work on it. I guess if we can't get anyone local, we can probably get Susan.
But, and then, yeah, yeah, I just think there's some local and Rita might have some ideas for people.
But Rita was good.
And Carol Tense is another option. And she might do it, but actually, you know, I have no idea what these people charge. But you don't have to pay for travel expenses.
Local ones are cheaper.
Well, it's good to go local and get out possible.
There's some. Quite a bit in this strategic plan that we started. That we had narrowed it down to half a dozen things.
I'll ask Mike for that.
Killin'. Worked on two, two, six, six, two, four, one.
Is that true?
That's real.
Okay, I think John was already planning and calling her.
Yeah, I'll ask John.
So I guess our homework is to go through this, right?
That's the start, yep. So.
Go through this, then whittle it down, what we see we don't need.
And then we'll talk Tuesday night about strategic planning.
I do like in here though, this document that does define the roles of the clerk and the treasurer and supervisor. That shouldn't, I know there's. Um, statutes on that, but I think for new people coming in, it does enlighten them.
And it should, it probably defines the trustee's role too.
It does to a certain, to a certain extent.
Yes, it should somewhat. And you can get rid of lots of words with bullets.
Yeah, I personally love bullets. Do we know that all of? Well, we talked just a couple hours ago about the planning commission specifically not having the documents that they need. Do you, have you handed out, even some red books to anybody like?
We don't have an extra. Uh, inventory of them. In fact, we ordered one for myself and then we separately ordered one for Roger Zappa. In my time here, so if we need more, we can order more.
Okay.
Probably be good for them, yeah.
Yeah, well, I had talked with Jason a couple of years ago. We knew the commission was changing and Mike was gonna retire and. All of that, um, we lost Frank and, you know, it had changed up. And, um, Jason and I met and I said, we need to have ordinance books, we need policies and we need everything for them. All your new board members and they should have in my mind, they should have all that with them at the meeting. So when they're going through ordinances and they're talking about the appendices, what they can and can't do. Um, they've got the information in front of us, asking the board.
Yeah, or something easily accessible.
Yeah, something. So as far as I know, that's not happened. And I thought about it then again with Bethany and Linda switched and came on. And I hadn't seen them, of course. If I'd, if you'd been here, I'd have gone in the office, but. I need to follow up on that and make sure, unless you feel that's kinda your job to see that all those doc, any documents and books. I mean, she should have a new MTA trustee book.
I have a really old one.
Every time they come on.
E book?
Yeah.
I'm not familiar with that one.
Yeah, supervisor has one trustee student.
If it's the red book, I know what you're talking about.
That's a different book. Those roles and responsibilities of the trustee. I probably have one in my office.
You know, the one.
Yeah, so they get updated. And sometimes Pete and I would grab some of those books and we'd go to MTA too and then bring them back.
I got several books at home that went down.
So for the most part, those aren't gonna change. You know, trustees' roles or, or, or any of the board roles aren't gonna change. That's legislatively anyway. We know about it. So even those older books are gonna be valuable.
Don't forget having.
From nineteen sixty eight, I have it.
We have to get in the habit, John, of getting.
I put them on the garage to bring here.
Everybody. So all, all of our committees should have bylaws. That should be the first thing they get. When they swear they're in, they should have a bylaw right there. So they know exactly what their responsibilities are.
It's called orientation to your position.
Right. And some of those committees, if you read them, you'll see that they are responsible to stay on the board. Or committee, rather, until they're replaced. And our planning commissioners have not done that. When they, when their terms are up, that's different.
Yeah.
Uh, but if they leave early, like some of them have, and some of our committee members, not all of the bylaws, and I don't remember them exactly off the top of my head. Uh, but it says right in there, you will not leave until you are replaced. So if you leave.
Yeah, that's a little bit difficult.
That's legislatively.
Circumstances though.
That's not ours. That's legislatively.
The reality is, is that can't always happen. In many cases, it should, but it can't always happen.
Yeah. But if somebody's gonna resign early, they need to be able to say, hey, you know, they need, wow.
Yeah, I mean, if your life circumstances dictate that you have to leave the area, you're not going to. Tell your new employer, sorry, you gotta wait, I gotta finish up my responsibilities on, on a township committee, right? Or health issues or whatever, but anyway. I, I agree that there should be a little more accountability there.
Yeah, and the, the whole point is they, they're not even aware of it. They don't have documentation. They don't even know what their responsibilities are. You know, how many meetings they can miss or whatever the criteria. So. All right, I'm gonna put strategic planning on Tuesday's meeting agenda. And we'll figure out. How we wanna handle it. If you can happen to get ahold of Rita or somebody in the meantime.
Yeah, I, I'm not familiar with, with Rita. I guess all I can do is talk to her and find out if she's.
She did it for us before. She might not.
I think she did it twice, actually.
Yeah, she might.
What's her last name? Hodges?
She married Glenn Van Ness, Van Ness the surveyor. Okay, thank you.
Might be a word. And then, uh. Maybe we can just decide or talk about it Tuesday night about the joint planning meeting. If we wanna tie that into strategic planning.
Oh, it'd be better.
Sure is easier. Where do we see the township going? What's our plan? You know, what do we wanna do five, five years, ten years?
Three, four, twenty.
It saves the whole meeting, you know, cuz you're looking at probably a couple hours for each one.
Mm-hmm, then we better feed on.
So, yeah. And I don't think it should be tied into either one of our meetings. It needs to be standalone so we can focus on that. You know, I don't know, Tuesday night at six o'clock or Saturday afternoon at three or whatever. I don't care, whatever works.
I think a weekend is gonna be hard.
Especially as we get closer to summer.
For sure. That being said, I know a lot of people that are busier in the winter than the summer, so.
Yeah, that's true. Okay, so policy governance, we're not quite, we're just gonna do our edits. Strategic planning, we're gonna talk about Tuesday night. Um, CIP will fall in line with strategic planning when it, when that happens. And plus, uh, going into the budget sessions. Um, some of that'll come out then. We've got, um, department heads that are gonna be requesting, you know, equipment or vehicles or whatever. And then John and I'll try to figure out what's available for the joint meeting with the commission. And how they see, maybe we can catch Jason and, um, John, Jim Johnson is our new chair. You can corral them and kinda see what their thoughts are.
Just so you know, I did talk to Jason this afternoon. He will be returning to at least partial days in the. Office starting next week, um, because of the transition we have coming with Ryan leaving. But, um, he will be a little available. The other thing is. If any of you have not checked your email in a while, it's gonna be another day or two. Our Microsoft Exchange server is offline due to the global hack by supposedly the Chinese, according to Microsoft. Um, we are switching to oh, look, sixty, three sixty five. I, I don't know exactly what it's called, but it will be. Cloud-based email, which is more secure than the exchange servers are currently. What happened is Microsoft Exchange is issued a patch to close the security loophole. And when they loaded it on our server, there was an error. Which meant they had two choices. That was basically the mail server back to the old settings. Which was a security issue, or come up with a new plan, and that's basically what we did. We are, nine oh six is in the process of switching us over to this cloud-based version. So every device that you use to access your township email will have to be programmed with a new cloud link to get to your email.
Oh, there's gonna be a, a lot of.
Um, it'll happen pretty quick. It just means everyone's gonna have to bring their device here for nine oh six to reprogram.
Just leave it here, John. Leave it here.
Well, you might have to be logged in for them to do it though. Well, they started that process today.
Okay, do you wanna bring it, bring it up tomorrow?
Well.
Well, you might need.
Let's wait and see how things go here because I don't want you to just drop it off. I think you have to log in.
So are you telling me we're not getting emails from the township email?
We're getting, we're getting emails and it's not getting to our computers because of.
Since last Thursday.
The exchange server is shut down currently.
Okay, so if I go on my township computer, I can't get my email, correct?
The only email you will have access to is what you had before.
Thursday. Okay.
Last Friday morning, basically.
So I can go on my phone and get it?
Nope.
No.
The exchange server is there.
I won't worry about going on that.
You're trying to say that. No, you're not checking.
I don't have any.
I almost wanna forward it to my other email.
But I haven't had anything.
Yeah, that's.
You can forward your township email address to your personal email.
So there's probably a bunch of.
No, no, we have too much stuff going on, that, too many places, yeah, really.
Will it all come back?
Yes.
Okay.
So what happened today, nine oh six came over and took our exchange server, replaced it with. A spare that they have. They brought our exchange server back. They are resetting it to the pre-patch settings. So that they can download all of the prior emails to the cloud that they're establishing for us. A little bit of a process, but they think it'll, hopefully by. A little bit of a process, but they think it'll, hopefully by the end of the week, everyone that's available should be reset up on the cloud.
And then we'll have to bring our computers here in order to get into it.
They have to relink your Outlook to the new cloud server.
Well, don't send anybody anything on.
Yeah, yeah.
I've been trying not to.
It's just my other one.
At some point in the week, I should have called each of you and said, hey, you're not gonna get any email until we figure this out. It's just been.
Oh.
Little bit of tail tail chasing and those of us that have had the back door to the email are communicating through a spam filter. Which is very archaic. And that just takes twice as much time to do anything, so. And you can't just pull from contacts either. You have manually type in an email address.
Doesn't have a red.
So we're adjourned at three fifty six.
That sounds good.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Chat with you later. Another marijuana um proposal. Yeah.